The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. White Pine County Commission Meeting, March 25th, 2020.
(inaudible)
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 Good morning and welcome to the Wednesday, March 25th, regular scheduled White Pine County Commission Meeting. We all agree, standing right in the pledge. And my question is...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we start the tremendous silence, I want Elizabeth to remind to explain to anybody what needs to be done if you're calling in on public comment or something. So Elizabeth, please tell them, whatever you got to tell them.
Yes, good morning, everybody. First of all, I would ask commissioners, anybody here physically present, to please use their outdoor voice in speaking, so we make sure that everybody present here and online can hear. Second of all, we would like everybody who is joining us online to mute themselves. Public comment will be limited to only public comment times. We would ask that you go ahead and raise your hand if you would like to go ahead and be recognized. That's either a thumbs up or a hand. It's under the reactions icon, which Mike is pointing out right there on your screen. So you just go ahead and click on that, and you can go ahead and, is that the reactions button, Mike?
Nope.
Nope, okay, hang on a second.
Just not moving.
Okay, so, or you get into the chat room there and let Mike know via chat that you are going to go ahead and want to say something. When you are recognized, please unmute yourself and stage your full name for the record. And you, comment is limited to three minutes today, so if that time has exceeded, you will be notified. And then when you are completed, please re-mute yourself. That will help prevent any type of feedback and allow everybody to be able to hear.
Prevent, please, from yelling at you. Is that Elizabeth?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, then we'll start the meeting with our regular, the opening minute of silence, Okay, we are going to open the meeting with public comment. Is there any public comment this morning? Anyone out there with public comment, or? Carolyn, do?
Yes, good morning, commissioners. For the record, I'm Caroline McIntosh, and I'm here socially distancing due to my vulnerable age group, and I appreciate everyone who's participating in person and on the Zoom. I just wanted to let you know that White Pine Main Street has a timed agenda item at 10 o'clock, and that Kyle Horvath will be making that presentation. We certainly appreciate all your support for the White Pine Main Street Association, and are very proud of all the accomplishments and our plans for the future. Thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else with a public comment out there? Is there anyone? Mike, have you seen anything? George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's nice to see you've got a sound system. Mr. Chairman, on your agenda item 2A, I want to be here to consider eliminating fees at the golf course for those over the age of 90. I find that insulting. I've been trying to get a building permit for months for my property that I'm being, and I'm being refused even though I'm willing to pay for it. Why don't you consider waiving building permit requirements for those over 70? Did the community choir receive a building permit for their centennial building? Did you notice the chic, black, plastic sheeting that covers thick corners of the roof? Doesn't that give you a sense of pride? Did the building inspector ever take back from Eureka with his wife in the city county vehicle that I reported to you back in September of 2019? Does the county have some kind of regulation that will not allow ethnic minorities, naturalized citizens, veterans, those with disabilities, or senior citizens conducting business as others do? Mr. Chairman, the county needs to halt any and all construction contemplated for the proposed new courthouse and deal expansion. The economy is rocky at best, that includes the city, the county, state, and federal. Revenues, taxes are not going to be coming in as usual. Anything, they're going to be falling. The COVID-19 pandemic is affecting more areas and more people all the time. If you're looking at the news, the numbers are not good. On the news this morning, the city of Lake Tahoe was telling potential visitors to stay home, especially those from California. Lake Tahoe officials stated that they have a small hospital, and they fear that they will be overwhelmed by those fleeing in California in particular. I caution you, you may be bringing in construction workers that may be coming from infected areas. I'm concerned about that. We have a small hospital. We're 250 miles from any major community, all of which have problems with the virus themselves. Mr. Chairman, at your commission meeting held on February 26th, 2020, I asked for a copy of resignation letter from the previous emergency manager director, and to date have not received that. This letter was not in the meeting pack for that particular meeting. Mr. Chairman, rumor has it, the Nevada Northern Rebel of the Southern Embezzlement possibly tens of thousands of dollars. I want to remind you that they do not operate under the Nevada Open Meeting Law, while receiving 240,000 or more taxpayers' money, boom tax in particular. The citizen taxpayer has no idea how the money is spent. They're just a conflict event mechanism, and that needs to stop. If anyone gets that kind of money from the public trough, taxes in particular, they need to be accountable. They need to show where that money is going, and you're not getting that. You need to put your foot down, Mr. Chairman, all of you folks. Mr. Chairman, Karen Kent here. Remember, the regional planning commission is yet to address the ADA sidewalk?
We've listened to that, George, and your three minutes are up, but thank you very much.
She hasn't complied. Mr. Biden has an account for the rental.
George, that's...
The revenue needs some answers.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Does anyone have a public comment? Have you seen one, Mike?
No, sir.
Okay, seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on. And we'll recess the regular county commission meeting and open the 9:00 special fire commission meeting, and the first item on that is also a public comment. Is there any public comment on the fire commission meeting? It's open for public comment, if there's anybody out there?
No, sir.
Seeing none, hearing none, we'll move on. Item, page 2, item 1, discussion for possible action, the approval of Resolution 2020-18 to augment the White Pine County Fire Protection District Fund, a man anticipated and unbudgeted beginning fund balance in the amount of $117,000 to begin engineering services on capital improvements to the volunteer fire stations in Lund, McGill, Ruth, budgeted for construction in fiscal year 2021. Elizabeth Francis.
Hi, good morning, thank you very much. This was based on action at the last commission, fire permission meeting requesting that resolution, or that we start the engineering services in this fiscal year instead of waiting until next fiscal year, so that when we're in construction season this summer and we've appropriated the money for these capital improvement projects, they can move forward. I did not have the opportunity to get this included, to get the backup, and I've asked District Attorney Mike Weeble to read it into the record, so people can hear what it says specifically, if that's okay. So Resolution Number 2020-18.
Okay, question in, just a second. Mine says 2020-02.
Yes, that's typographical errors. 2020-18.
All right, it's a resolution to augment the White Pine County Fire Protection District Fund from unanticipated, unbudgeted beginning fund balance in the amount of $117,000 to begin engineering services for capital improvements to volunteer fire stations in Lund, McGill, and Ruth that are budgeted for construction in fiscal year 2021. Whereas there have been important capital improvement projects identified for the volunteer fire stations in Lund, McGill, and Ruth, and whereas it is the intention of the fire commission to get these projects accomplished, I assume it is feasible to proceed, and whereas it is possible to begin engineering process for these projects in the first fiscal year, so that actual construction can begin at the beginning for fiscal year 2021. And whereas the cost of engineering services for all projects is estimated to be $117,000, which was unanticipated and unbudgeted expense during the fiscal year 2020 budget process. And whereas the fiscal year 2020 White Pine County Fire Protection District beginning fund balance was budgeted at $2,331,085, including the $1 million reserve for catastrophic loss, and the actual beginning fund balance is $2,709,027, which is 377,942 more than budgeted, of which 88,629 was utilized for power lift systems, 5,000 was used to purchase the adapters for the three striker power load systems, 11,528 to repair the Cherry Creek Fire Station roof, and 16,982 to repair the Ruth Fire Station roof, leaving 255,803, which is legally available for appropriation. Now therefore, being resolved, that the White Pine County Fire Protection District shall appropriate unbudgeted and unanticipated general fund beginning fund balance, 296-000-29905-000, in the amount of $117,000. And increase the fire district capital improvement account, 2963205316000, by the same amount, in order to begin engineering services for capital improvements to be done at the volunteer fire stations. It is further resolved, the finance directorship, for the necessary documents that Department of Taxation states Nevada proposed to be passed today, adopted and approved the 25th of March, 2020.
Ian, commissioner, you've got any questions on what we spoke to, and we spoke about this in the last meeting, so we can start the construction as soon after July, or as possible. Anybody got anything they'd like to add? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Motion. Sorry. Motion to approve Resolution 2020-18.
Motion by Lori, second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passion animals? Item 2, on page 2 is discussion of possible action, the approval of beginning engineering services on capital improvements for volunteer fire stations in Lund, McGill, and Ruth, budgeted for construction in fiscal year 2021. Elizabeth, is it?
Okay, so we did go out and do an RFQ to obtain engineers, engineering firms that would be able to work with the county on different various projects throughout the years, and the intent of moving forward is that the public works director, Bill Calderwood, will go ahead and reach out to these. Remember, under the newly defined public legislation, public works are per discrete project, so we can't lump these all together. We have to do three individual requests for proposals. Bill will be getting that, seeing, telling people what the projects are, getting those numbers back, and then moving forward based on those proposals. So just requesting now that you've approved the budget to actually start that process.
Any questions, by anyone on the move? Anybody hearing that, I'll look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane, second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passion animals? Item 3, discussion for possible action, direction on the FY 2021 fire district question. Elizabeth?
Thank you. And in your packets, I did provide the budget worksheets that I revised based on our last meeting. And instead of going through this document, which you can go through on your own, at your leisure, there is a summary sheet that looks like this, which is called the estimates of ending fund balance for FY 2021, as of March 25th, 2020 commission meeting. And you will note that the, under Fund 296, the White Pine County Fire Protection District, we have every, the first column shows you what I've estimated the ending fund balance to be for FY 2020, which of course then becomes the beginning FY 21, beginning fund balance. And then we have the budgeted revenues, the budgeted expenses, and the calculated ending fund balance. Okay, so first of all, the numbers highlighted in yellow represent the assumption that you would pass Resolution 2020-18 today, which you just did. So that increases our ending fund balance because, or decreases our ending fund balance because we're not going to go ahead and utilize that 117, or we're going to start utilizing that $117,000 in this fiscal year, but it reduces the expenditures in FY 2021 by that same amount. So it just shifts it from one year to the other. It becomes a net wash. But you will notice that we need to do some work on this budget, as we do anticipate that the ending fund balance will be negative $161,000. It is not within NRS that you may do that. And so the, there are options as far as considering delaying CIP, revising the budget numbers, but we do need to take a serious look at that. I want to emphasize that this is a negative operating fund balance and does not include the $1 million for catastrophic loss that you set aside, so you'd actually have about $840,000 left in that catastrophic loss, but that is not what those funds are deserved for. We could take a look at that. You would have to work to rebuild that catastrophic loss fund then. And then the other thing that is unknown at this time is how much additional spending will we do in this fiscal year for our fire district? Having looked at those numbers, I had adjusted that estimated ending fund balance slightly, but I won't know until I have better opportunity to discuss this with fire chief, who has been very busy as of recent days with additional duties. So this is the one budget that I do have concerns about.
Is there, is there anything with our agreement with the city that could possibly raise that as well? If they ask for more, would that be, would that be something that would impact this budget as well?
Well, they shouldn't be asking for any more. The one thing that is included in this budget is their request for $100,000 to go ahead and jointly purchase a new ambulance that will help service the county and city. Because I think as we discussed last time, all of their ambulances are now over 100,000 miles, and they have concerns that they need to get a new ambulance into their fleet that they can conduct as their main ambulance. So that number is in this budget. That's the only increase that will happen related to the city county relationship.
Well, we can strike the Cherry Creek water tender, that would get us to 100.
Okay.
And then we can see where the bids actually come in at.
Okay, so I can go ahead and strike the Cherry Creek water tender, which was, I believe, the $60,000. Let me get to that page there. Yes, and then just budget the CIP for the balance, so we don't go negative, and then see where the bids come up in at, and adjust from there.
Yeah, I mean, I think we have to do these capital improvements. We promised it, we got to stick to it.
Yep.
Water truck, you know, like if, we can figure something else out there later on.
Good fight.
And I mean, I don't know, 300,000 to put a bathroom in a station, that's more than the whole building cost, but I mean, I know we have all the rules, we have to divide by what's weighed and stuff, but maybe Christmas.
Yeah, I think we may be able to get way more creative with how we handle that, and maybe review our existing space and see if we can make modifications within the existing building. And I mean, even jackhammering floors, running some plumbing, if we can identify a usable space, we might be able to work that out.
And Bill Calderwood will help with that, also, as far as...
Absolutely.
Bill, do you have any comments or guidance on these capital improvement numbers?
He might not be looking right at them. Are you looking at the capital improvement numbers? So we're looking at...
Looking at the CDV presentation.
375 grand for Lund. We're looking at 300 grand for McGill, 300 grand for Ruth.
I think, I clearly believe those estimates are on the high side, and I kind of requested that, and went on my met with the engineer just to look through them. And there are some portions of that that can be removed from the project. For example, the Ruth project and the Lund project calls for valley gutters all the way around, so we don't have water drainage from the parking lots to the street, creating a soft spot there. But we could, we could probably look at some of those projects and reduce some of that cost, for sure. And then, other than that, I think they're going to be high, though. I think you're going to find funds available for engineering, plenty of funds there, and plenty of funds for the project to get them completed.
What do you think of having the Gill bathroom, we added, if we added to the building inside, instead of going inside the building for the shower, we added, excuse me, if we added onto the building as opposed to going inside to put the shower, that in there?
Yeah, they, we kind of discussed that with Ricky Garcia, and the problem with doing that, I think you're, it's going to be more, it's going to be more expensive, and we've limited our ability to get into the community library that we're just finishing up too, so. And I'm not sure, but would almost, probably can't do it, because where that sewer runs behind on the north side of that building, it would be right on the edge of that sewer, and I'm sure McGill GID has some kind of a right of way through there, you can only construct so close to it, so.
Just, if I may, Mr. Chairman, to let you know that we do have approximately 73,600 building as contingency on these three projects. So there, I mean, you always want to have contingency because you don't know what's going to come up, but we can maybe limit scopes and then reduce contingencies and look at how we can most effectively manage them.
Yeah, Bill, if you would just get, kind of have a break it out, where this, on the Ruth and Lund ones, you know, what we can cut, and then one of the bits, we'll just see if they all come in under, if we're good, or...
Okay, I'll work with Brett, I mean, I met with Ricky Garcia last week and discussed, we've actually moved the restrooms over from where they currently work. That'll help, actually, because there'll be less floor to cut out and things like that, so. We're kind of moving that way, just waiting on this approval, hopefully. So, a problem, we'll look at it.
Yeah, I'd say we just wait and see what the better numbers come in, and then go from there.
So if we do that, we can move forward and propose this as a tentative budget, and then go ahead and get that. If there is additional information that comes in, we can adjust between the tentative and final budgets on this.
And tell me if my math is off here, but just taking out these things that are only going to be paid for this year, I'm just looking at moving forward, our revenue versus operating expenses, we're still about 55 grand in the red, not counting any budget balance or any front balance, but it looks like we're 600 and change grand on revenues, and then our expenses, and I deducted all of these things, the capital improvement stuff, the water tender, the ambulance, still leaves us at a $55,000 deficit of income versus expenses we probably should tighten up at some point.
Okay, I'm not quite sure I followed that, but...
Okay, so we've got 1.8 million in budgeted expenses for this year, yep?
Yes.
Okay. That's not going to be our budgeted expenses next year, because a whole chunk of that is all of these capital improvements we're doing, the ambulance we're buying, the water tender. If we take that out, the balance of that minus the budgeted revenue is still a $55,000 deficit.
Oh, okay, so you're talking just strictly operating?
Yep, just operating.
What was the average deficit over the last couple of years for the fire district? Wasn't it quite a bit more, and then, I mean, this is over 55,000, and that's a fraction of what it used to be, right?
Well, in 2017, 2018, we had a budgeted deficit of 26,500, and the actual activity showed a $257,000 positive number. In 2018, 2019, we had a budgeted $43,000 increase, and the actual activity was 476,000. That is the year we converted from fully manned to a contract service, so we had a substantial amount of savings. This year, we are budgeted for a $314,000 decrease, and current numbers mean nothing in the overall picture, so.
And we've got part of, you know, the downside to saving all of that money is it also changed how we operate, changed some of our revenue numbers as well, right, Elizabeth? So I'm just looking on, it's not really upsetting me, more like we just probably need to look at some more ways to get our revenue back up under the current situation, so.
Correct. One of the, one of the things that, you know, we did do as, as the county commission was, when we changed, we decreased the amount that came from the county's general fund and to the fire district fund.
Yeah, so what, how much, was it, in 2018, 2019, was this, this 396 from the general fund?
Yes.
Okay, and then this year, we're at 200?
Correct.
Okay, so yeah, there's the...
And that's with the capital improvements, right?
Well, the, the transfer over was, didn't matter where it was spent at.
But what I'm saying is, had we not had capital improvements in the budget for this next year, we wouldn't have transferred over all that.
I think from an operating perspective, you would want to increase that if that is how you wanted to address the operating deficiencies.
Well, right now, we're saving 200,000 out of the general fund, if we have to cover the 55 or whatever that being identified that still has the savings of 150,000, which was our main goal.
Yes, exactly.
So we're, operationally, we're, we're doing what we want.
Moving in the right direction.
Yes.
And I think you'll see some, in the next coming years, see some additional capital improvements, but these are the three big ones anyway that are possible. We're still going to continue on, some of the rural fire stations definitely need some upgrades to them, but I think that will, I think these will be the big ones, and then after that, maybe 100,000 kind of projects combined with upgrading of heating and lighting and those kind of things. The capital improvement projects will still come forward, for sure, for a few years till we get the stations where they should be.
Good. Can't make up 20 years of maintenance in one, 20 years together.
No.
Yep, and then correct, Elizabeth, in the future, we can use that proceeds and those type of things to fund these.
Correct.
Yeah, one-time monies.
Yes.
And our current usage to date of the 200,000 has been 22,000, the 21,918, correct?
That, that's a matter of transfers, it will be a full 200,000 by the end of the year.
We are drawing a transfer.
Yes, we will transfer 100% of that.
Okay.
Can you ask, Elizabeth?
No, if you are good with me making those changes, and you would like me to approve this, if you would like to approve this budget, I can go ahead and prepare it for the tentative in the state format, and have you approve that as the next meeting.
Should the motion include the elimination of the water tender at Cherry Creek?
And the reduction of the capital improvements down to the net amount to balance the budget.
That's the motion that I'll be looking for then. There's no other, has he any else on the fire district here? I'll look for that motion. Motion by Ian?
Second.
Second by Travis. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, passion animals? Okay, we are at the end of the special fire commission meeting, and the last thing on the side was public comment. Any public comment that we can hopefully discuss with fire district? Do you see anything, Mike? Elizabeth? Nothing, everything's good, no one, public comment? That being said, we'll adjourn the fire commission meeting and reopen the White Pine County Commission meeting. We're right on the number here at 9:30. Page 2, item B1, discussion, is a proposal ordinance number 510, discussion, first reading of a proposed ordinance 510, bill number 03.25.2020. five point two zero two zero, and ordinance amending title eight of the White Pine County Code declaring that wild horses are not given a higher status than cattle, sheep, or other authorized livestock within White Pine County.
Chairman, I'd like to make disclosure, my family runs cattle and sheep in White Pine County, but this proposal will really have an effect, but whatever effects it does has effects on all ranchers and livestock growers equally, so I will be voting and commenting on this issue.
That's right. This is more of a, we were asked, our office was asked to draft this to help identify the nuisance that the horses are in our community, in our county, and also the economic impact they have over our cattle ranching industry and our inability to do anything about it because there's special protection at the federal level. There's a case law out there, so this is just one step in the direction that might give us some additional legal footing someday if we can figure out a way to leverage our county rights against the inaction of the federal government.
I think this is a great move.
And just for the other commissioners, the, like, the backstory on this is just what happens is the horses will overrun the grain and then the government requires ranchers to revoke their grazing permits for these horses and it's, you know, they don't, then, you know, their, their right has been infringed upon with, with this nuisance. And this is, you know, just a, a way to kind of shore some of this up and maybe get some of the other counties and stuff on board with similar ordinance and try to at least bring some attention on the issue.
I think we ought to send this over to NACO and let Dagny go ahead and distribute it out.
Yeah, that's exactly what's passed or anything.
Yeah, I must get ahead of myself. I, I thought it was a, a, a great amendment and I'm going to make a motion to approve the ordinance amending Title Eight of the White Pine County Code.
For action.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry. I got carried away.
We'll have to come back, we'll have to come back in the meeting.
Okay, it could never be the?
But I just wanted to get some comments and from the board and see if there's any que, additional questions about any changes. I mean, there's, there's not much to this ordinance, it's just, it's just a status thing, you know, we're identifying that they're livestock, you know, they're not wildlife because the state controls our wildlife and they can't control them, you know, and they're not domestic animals and we can't. So it's, it's frustrating and eventually the federal government's going to have to do something about it.
Is this a state bill or is this federal? I know that if we, when we get ready to vote, ultimately vote approve this, we'll just put our two cents worth in and try to get some others on board. My, is this the federal, are the wild horses federal?
Yeah, so under the supremacy clause of the constitution, the federal laws tend to trump ordinance and so, so they have, back in the sixties, I think it was, they put, they protected a lot of horses and burrows to a certain degree and then left a complete discretion to the federal government pretty much to manage it in course of not being inclined to force the government's animal management regardless of how unmanaged and mismanaged it is. And there's an actual economic loss to our ranchers and to our wildlife, the state wildlife. You know, we look four different ways to try to get standing to sue the government and we've looked at other lawsuits across the country, it's just, it's not following where, so we're trying, counties like ours are trying to get creative and find a legal in to be able to protect all the wildlife.
It was a huge discussion at the interim legislative committee on public lands. Almost everybody got up and talked about the impact of the wild horses. That said, and I, I can't remember the numbers, but annually, full crop, full, F O A L crop increases by twenty-five percent every year, but then you would, you would subtract, so far as total numbers, then you would go ahead and subtract how many horses were gathered. But then, as a whole, because of the holding areas where those that are not adoptable or whatever, we end up paying for that.
Yeah, the, the
For their upkeep.
The federal government put management quotas, management unit that they have characterized, kind of like Fish and Game does for a management unit. Well, federal government has been similar for quotas and management areas for wild horses and they're many times over the limit, several thousand and tens of thousands of some units over a bit of limit.
Oh, yeah.
But they still don't want to do that. So, and every time we have a federal representative here, a congresswoman or a senator, we always, always talk about it and they understand the issue. I just think there's not a lot of Washington City so disconnected with politicians from all they think about is the romantic image of the wild horse at the last and they're not on it. They don't understand the facts in the ground, how bad it is for the horses as well, and it's bad for everyone and mismanagement, so. These environmentalists don't understand the issue.
Social public safety issue too, you look, you know, going from Fallon to Dayton to Carson City, there's multiple horse hit, horses hit there, car accidents.
Yeah, there's fatalities.
Just, yeah, going through Lincoln County, they, horses were hit with a school bus, children's school bus. So it, it's, something needs to happen and I think this is a good first step.
Well, since we're on a public discussion, I'm going to just say this, when the federal government neglects its duty to its citizens, there's so much apathy over time, you're going to have to expect that local governments and local citizens are going to take matter of their own hands and that's not what anybody wants, that's not what federal government wants, but if they don't act, I'm afraid that people will. And I'm not going to stop.
General locusts and that's all they are. Any other discussion on this item? It's just the first reading of this ordinance, we'll have other discussions, open comment at future meetings, but I think it's a good step and hopefully we can make some, yeah, make some progress on this. And let's try, that's all we can do is try and it's a good, it's a good, it's a good ordinance. Okay, hearing done, we're just going to, that was a discussion item, that was the nine thirty item. So let's go to page three, which is short of the nine forty-five, so let's find something to confuse here real quick. Let's go to page four and we'll go to items from elected officials and department heads. Item two A, county commission, another one is Richard Howe, chairman, discussion for possible action, approval of a letter of support to the vast lands council by their efforts to transfer the title of certain public lands from the federal government to the state of Nevada. Okay, we have sent, we, we drafted a letter to send in support that this commission supports these actions to have the Nevada lands council and the public lands taken away from the federal government, so we received that and, and just went for a motion to approve.
This is the commissioners and they'll go, or, okay.
Yeah. There's a letter drafted and we turned it in to Cole Scott and
Perfect.
Ready to move forward if the commission wants to support this.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion by Travis, second by Lori, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Item B is discussion for possible action to approve to eliminate the fees at the golf course for golfers over age of ninety. This is by me, it was brought to my attention by the golf pro. We have only two members that are ninety, they've been members for fifty years, and the way the golf structure, season passes, is dictated, you pay five hundred and twenty-five dollars for your green fee for the year. I play, and I have all discos, I play with both these, these two gentlemen. They sometimes will play four holes and sometimes they can play five, but they're ninety years old and they paid their dues to the, to the course for fifty years plus. This is not waiving their fee, they will pay, they would pay their shed fee and their trail fee for the use of the course, but because of their, their amount of time they can use and they're ninety, they're ninety, over ninety years old, and this is for any man, woman, or child, we have, if the next youngest is eighty, this wouldn't impact the county budget at hard, at all, but it's just to allow these ninety-year-olds and for the future, to let them pay or let them weigh their green fees because their, their time of playing, they may not even be able to play the whole year, but to charge them the five twenty-five after all these years and all the support that all these gentlemen, and I, I've paid my fees and when I'm ninety years old, hopefully, then I'll be able to do this, but it's, it's a real big number. There are very, very few, I think there's only been one or two other members in the last twenty years that have been over ninety years old that play. Believe me, that's quite an accomplishment for anybody who's still on the golf course at ninety. And it's just asking the commission to waive the five twenty-five in greens fees, allow these gentlemen to play golf as long as they possibly can. And so that's why that's here and I'm just, I, it was approached by the golf pro, I, I mentioned to the, to the district attorney, so I'm just trying to see what the appetite of this commission would be, just the way the green fee, they'll pay their shed fees and, and their trail fees, which amount to about five hundred dollars right there, a little more, three thirty plus one eighty-five, that's four, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. So if the commission has an appetite, I'd like to see this waived for the ninety-year-olds forever. And if you don't, then I'm not taking that too. It's just a request.
Before we get into this, Mike?
Yeah.
One of the men that he's mentioning is, is an uncle of mine, he's not a blood relative, he was married to one of my father's sister. Do I put, put on this?
No, just disclosure, it's fine.
I would disclose that, that one of the golfers that, or is my uncle, was married to my aunt for many years, four or five.
Well, not, not, not a blood uncle.
Not a blood uncle.
No, married to.
Uncle through married, yeah, married to my aunt.
I think that's.
So there's my spiel to try to see what we can do for these gentlemen and anyone else in the future, I'd like, welcome any comment and if not, I look for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion by Shane to approve, second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None, passionate? Thank you very much.
I would like to mention, one of them did have a hole in one last year, but.
I think that's a, a, quite a testament to our community and lifestyle that we have up here.
And they're able to actively?
For that longevity, yes.
So thank you very much, that's, that's the item that I had. Okay, item C is discussion for possible action to appointment of a member of the board county commissioners to serve the county as the county's representing representative for the purpose of any, any existing master service agreement between the county and Resource Concepts Incorporated, RCI, and to serve as the natural resource user. Didn't we discuss, haven't you appointed that?
It, it wasn't on the agenda.
Right.
So we had, that, we, that's why we had to bring it back, so.
So I think we had talked about appointing Lori to this, to this position. Does anybody have any questions about that?
I just have one question, I mean, obviously all the board meetings and stuff are canceled for who knows how long, but I guess just maybe if I could just be an alternate since along the water advisory committee liaison, then when we do merge the two boards or if we do merge the two boards and then just defer to, to Lori for both of those, because they become one, but I think just to be on the safe side, if I could just be the, the alternate and then anything that comes from the water resources committee, I can bring forth to RCI and this may not even come up if we do merge it in July.
I think that's a great idea.
Good. So I'll vote for a motion to appoint Lori as the liaison and to appoint Travis as the alternate.
Move to approve?
Motion by Shane, second by Ian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, we've reached, let's go back to the timed item, at nine forty-five. Page three, item C, nine forty-five road condition. Item one is discussion update on the primary and secondary roads within White Pine County and county facilities, completing of future projects, communication with corporations and other governmental affairs. Bill?
Good morning. Road activities between January thirteenth and March twelfth, road make, roads that receive maintenance, K Valley, Eastview Valley, Ruby Valley, Spring Valley, Newark Valley roads. We did work in the Lund Preston area and that includes the dump, pole line, Third South, First West, the Cove Road and the Dairy Road. Also, we've, we've done work in Mitchell Road, Rogers Road, two twelve north, Bull Creek, Silver Creek, Big Springs, Shellburne Pog, Birch Road, and the Shooting Forest Road. Very limited to snow plowing during this time period. Half of the employees at the road department received their flaggers certification, it's a two-year certification, so we staggered the group. We've done sweeping around the Ruth Mineral Heights, Aspen Heights, the industrial park and the courthouse area. We finished some screening in the South Steptoe Park. We're limited to the length of time we can be in that pit, so we've got that whole road capped and everything we needed in, out of that gravel pit, unless we have some spare material in case of an emergency. Continuing to GIS, the county roads, I would say of the standard for fuel tax eligible roads, where probably three quarters of the roads are completed at this time. We reclaimed a gravel pit in Newark Valley, the Hunting Pit, Huntington Pit, that was out of material, but it had just, for some reason, had always stayed with the county, so we went ahead and got that reclaimed. All county gravel pits are currently permitted or have one time, or, or on a one-year time extension. And then the ones that, we had some that, what happened is, starting with Bill Miller, he went before the BLM requesting these gravel pits to be reissued, they didn't happen in a timely manner, so we put in for a one-year extension, they still didn't happen in a one-year extension, and then finally, they started trickling in about four or five a year, and, but when they came back to us, they had all these restrictions where what used to be